Call to order the January 25th, 2019 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland School, District Two Board of Trustees. At this time, we will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
I move that we convene the executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, and a contractual matter regarding the charter school.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we move into executive session for the purpose of student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, contractual matter regarding the charter high school. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. Okay, we'll do a hand vote then. We'll do a hand vote and a verbal. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries and will move into executive session at this time. Good evening. Welcome to the June 25th, 2019 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees, where we have just returned from executive session where we discussed student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, contractual matter regard... No, actually, we didn't need to discuss that. We had on our agenda a contractual matter regarding the charter high school, but we didn't have to discuss that in executive session. Dr. Elkins Johnson is not with us physically tonight, but she's with us by way of conference call. We will move on to our agenda, to item three, specifically 3.1 Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Shakira Shire. If you can come forward while I'm introducing you. Ms. Shire is actually a rising junior at Spring Valley High School. I had the pleasure of meeting her recently at a museum event at the University of South Carolina when she spoke so eloquently and wowed the room. So it's good to have you tonight. Born in Orangeburg, but from Columbia, South Carolina. Been a student of Richland District Two for your entire educational career. Member of Ridgewood Baptist Church, active in her community. 3.9 GPA while taking your AP and Honors classes. Engaged member of her community, including the youth president, is it, of the Youth and WACP? And advocating for equality of rights and community engagement and inclusion. And I wanted to share the quote that you gave to me. The quote that you enjoy by Tupac Shakur, "Reality is wrong; dreams are real." So, good to have you here. And I just glossed through that. But welcome, and you may start speaking, whatever you want to speak into the mic so we can all hear you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. First, give an honor to God and my mom and my family. And to Madam Chairman, John F. Kennedy once quoted, "Let us think of education as the means of developing our greatest ability, because in each of us, there is a private hope and dream which fulfilled can be translated into strength to benefit for everyone and a greater strength for our nation." Have you heard of the rose that grew from concrete? Some in the terms of the rose that grew from concrete might say, "Look at all those scratches and marks, not paying attention carefully to what really mattered. A rose had grown from concrete. A rose that grew out of something no more than trouble, yet it turned into a beautiful rose even with the struggle of survival." When I think of educators in education, I compare the educators to much of a farmer, someone who plants a seed and waits for its manifestation, the very people who can grow a beautiful product. Why would educators as farmers not put the plow in the ground in the spring if he or she couldn't see the vision of the harvest, specifically in the summer when it's finished? Is it possible to see the finished harvest? The answer is yes, by hope. Hope is often defined as a term of feeling of expectation and desire. Not only do we find ourselves in a need to hope, but to dream. To dream individually, we all may have a different concept when it comes to dreaming. To dream is to have a cherished aspiration, ambition, or ideal. Through the amounts of stress and levels of uncertainty, I learned how to hope and dream. Many of us don't know, and if you don't, I've come to tell you. Once you allow yourself to fall, you build an immunity to the greatest fear of hitting the ground. Often times, we fail to come to the realization that the best dreams happen when we are awake. So dream, no matter who believes in you, no matter the circumstances, but know that that dream you may have may cause you to endure pain, disappointment, failure, doubt. You may even question yourself and the universe, "Why me?" Rough times may come, but surely they will not stay. Last week, I had the opportunity at my church to go to a lock-in, and the theme was "Here on Purpose." So little do we know that we're all here on purpose to work towards a dream. When asked what my purpose is, to many will I say, "My mission is to reach, build, and correct the fellow lives of people in our surrounding community while making an effort to change the nation." We all have different missions, but in order to seek and obtain that mission, we must hope and dream, allowing ourselves to remain awake. In one of his famous songs, Teddy Pendergrass once said, "Wake up all the teachers, time to teach a new way." Then maybe they will listen to what you have to say, 'cause they're the one who's coming up, and the world is in their hands. When you teach the children, teach them the very best you can. When I see educators working in education, seeing what they do, it makes me realize that being an educator is one of the most critical jobs in the world. The job that causes one to think creatively, innovatively, critically, independently, and gives the opportunity for students and others to connect with more people. My question today is to you, are you hoping? Are you dreaming? And most importantly, are you living to exist, or are you existing to live? What is your purpose? And as she said earlier, I leave you with a quote by Tupac Shakur, "Reality is wrong; dreams are for real." Thank you. If you... Everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shire, and good to have your family here with you. The University of South Carolina had an event recently that was talking about some civil rights and history, just all the sacrifices that a lot of people made, so that we could all be here together in the same room, people from different backgrounds, different hues, different genders. And my cousin, Sarah May Fleming Brown, was one of the people who were featured. And for you to get up in the midst of talking about sacrifice and all that good folks did so that we could all have a seat at the table and have equity and parity in our lives, and this young lady got up and spoke about hope. So, thank you tonight for talking about hope and waking up everybody. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Moving on to item four, approval of the agenda. Item 4.1. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the agenda for this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this...
Madam Chair. Yeah, I would just like to point out again that I would like to see item 14.1 removed from the agenda for the approval of the July 23rd agenda. Once again, we have three items that were included on the agenda that weren't approved last time, as stated by the Madam Chair at our last meeting when I expressed the concern. There are plenty of things that do come up that need to be added to the agenda prior to the meeting. So I think it would... It's an unnecessary exercise, 14.1, because we will add multiple things prior to the next meeting. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from board members? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Moving on to item five, Special Recognition. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before us this evening Ms. Libby Ruth, who will share with us the special recognitions for the June 25th Board Meeting. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I just can't seem to quit coming up here because our students and teachers and employees can't seem to quit winning awards, which is amazing. I can't remember ever going this far after the school year with awards, but we have some amazing students who found time out of summer break, summer vacation plans, summer jobs to be with us tonight. We thank them and the parents and those with us. So we will begin by calling up Aria Caldwell from Blythewood Middle School, principal and her principal, Charis Muzik. Aria has been named a Duke TIP Grand Scholar, also with... Along with a student from Summit Parkway Middle, who we will be recognizing at a future Board Meeting. Many of you may be familiar with Duke TIP, as you've seen on bumper stickers in cars around the area. My kid is a TIP Scholar. And that's impressive for seventh graders who score in the 95th percentile of grade level testing and take the ACT and/or the SAT exams. So of course, Aria is a Duke TIP Scholar, but she's also a Grand Scholar, and that is even more impressive. Seventh graders must score at least 670 on the SAT in reading, and I said seventh graders. Did y'all make sure y'all caught that? And writing, and/or a 680 in math. For the ACT, they must have a 31 in English or reading, and a 29 in math or a 28 in science. Only about 4% of all participants in this program qualify for grand recognition. A student who qualifies as a TIP Grand Scholar is sent a special invitation, inviting them to a special day at Duke University, and Aria was able to attend that event. In addition to the recognition ceremony and reception, she was able to meet with admissions officers, learn about options for gifted students, and how to prepare for college. Congratulations, Aria. We are so proud of you. This is quite an achievement. I kid you not, I think the day after our last Board Meeting, I got another email about the Cavplex program at Richland Northeast. So they are back, and I'm going to ask them to come forward, those who are representing them tonight. I don't believe Breeze Brown could be here, but I believe we have Jamie Collins. Caleb Daniels couldn't come, and Wade Fletcher couldn't come, but also I think Yasmin Lee is here with us. And we'll go ahead and ask their advisor and our new Teacher of the Year, A.J. Chambers, to come up with them, and Principal Dr. Sabrina Suber. Go ahead and clap for them, absolutely. So several broadcast students traveled to Atlanta for the Southeast Emmy Student Production Awards, and they brought home top awards. Breeze Brown and Yasmin Lee won an Emmy in the Arts and Entertainment category. Caleb Daniels and Wade Fletcher won an Emmy in the Commercial category. And to no surprise, the most prestigious award, the Best Newscast Emmy, went to R&amp;E TV Live. And Jamie Collins is the news director, and she's accepting the certificate. I've said it a million times, we are so proud of you. Congratulations yet again. Dr. Suber, you can stay up here, and you're going to be here for a little bit. And we're going to ask one of your track and field stars, Shania Bellamy, to come... Actually, you want to hurdle some chairs to get up here? And your coach, Lawrence Terry. Shania won the state championship in the Class 4A 400-meter hurdles with a personal best of 1 minute, 3 seconds. In the 400-meter event, runners must clear 10 hurdles that are evenly spaced around the track. Although there is no longer any penalty for knocking hurdles over, runners prefer to clear them so nothing will slow them down. And obviously, Ms. Bellamy, nothing slowed you down, obviously. The even more exciting news is that Shania is a rising senior. So we get her for another year, and we hope that she will be back here next year for a third state championship. Congratulations. All right, Dr. Suber, you... One more, yep, because we've got some more athletes. Would Chase Aspel and Jason English from the R&amp;E baseball team, along with your coach, Coach Hummers, Lucas Hummers, come forward? We also possibly, hopefully, maybe have Kyrie Miller from Spring Valley and his coach, Matt Hill. Are they able to make it with us? Not a problem. We will still recognize them. So these young men were invited by the South Carolina Baseball Coaches Association to play in the prestigious postseason All-Star Game. Chase and Jason were both named to the 4A North-South All-Star Team, and Kyrie was invited to play in the North-South Select Team. Both teams include the best senior baseball players in South Carolina. Chase, who was Region Player of the Year, has committed to play at Erskine next year. Jason will join the USC Lancaster baseball team. This dynamic duo helped to lead the Cavaliers to win the Region III 4A Championship, the school's first since 2007. Kyrie, who plays an outfielder and first baseman, has committed to play ball next year at Spartanburg Methodist College. Best wishes to all of you and good luck in your future careers. You can have a seat. Now we get to recognize some of our strongest athletes. Ridgeview Weightlifters Riley Offord, and come on up when I call your name, Jabari Hampton and Joshua Holmes. Has coached Darlington. Perfect timing. And Athletic Director Brian Rosefield and Assistant Principal Melissa Myers. Let me just give you a disclaimer. I'm going to talk about weight, but in weightlifting, when you give out someone's weight, that's a good thing. So, just so you know, when women talk about weight, they always get a little nervous. I just make sure everybody knows this is a good thing. The Ridgeview Strength Team won the 4A State Weightlifting Championship. So if you're keeping count, that's two team state championships for Ridgeview this year? Or two? That's right. Jabari, Riley, and Joshua gave the Blazers valuable points to win the team title. Jabari won the bench press by benching 350 pounds while weighing 178 pounds, and he squatted 445 pounds. Riley won the bench... This makes me tired just standing here. I mean, I'm worn out right now. I can't do it. Riley won the bench press at 275 while weighing 148 pounds and finished fourth in the squat, squatting 355 pounds. Josh, who was just a freshman, finished second in the bench at 225 while weighing 128 and fourth in the squat with 305. Those numbers all add up to another state championship for Ridgeview. In addition, Jabari won the Individual 180 Weight Class Championship for the second year in a row and was named the 2019 Strength Athletic... Excuse me, Strength Athlete of the Year. Congratulations on that amazing performance. And that concludes our recognitions for tonight. Thank y'all very much again.
We'll wait just a second or two for the room to clear out while those who desire to leave are tipping out. Oh my gosh, yeah. Yeah. At this time, we've reached item six in our agenda, approval of our consent agenda. We could get a motion at this time. Mr. Manning.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as provided by the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. Well, it's already popped up. We will cast our votes at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. We've reached item seven, which is our first opportunity for public participation. It doesn't look as if anyone has signed up to address the Board this evening, so we'll move on to item eight, specifically Legislative Update. Mr. Shad.
Madam Chair and fellow members of the board, there is no legislative update for today, June 25th. Everyone's out of session. Yeah, they're just vetoing the... Well, they are looking to override certain vetoes.
There you go. Exactly. And we'll probably have an update after this week. We'll have an update on how those vetoes have gone. Thank you, Mr. Shad. Any questions? Moving on to item nine, voting on executive session items. If we could get a motion to address item 9.1, Student Appeals.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Student number one, make the motion to deny the appeal. And we're going to do all three separate.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Board members, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr.... Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will cast our votes at this time. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Is there a motion with regard to student number two?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Student number two moved to deny the... Or motion to deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded. With regard to student two, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. And if you could, Mr. Manning, just verify the motion on screen to make sure it appears as you've read it.
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. We will cast our votes at this time. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
At this... Yes.
Student number three, motion to deny the appeal.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that the appeal be denied. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for the question and cast our votes. Does the motion read accurately on screen, Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you. We'll cast our votes at this time. By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. Is there a recommendation with regard to item 9.2, Student Admission Requests into the District's Adult Education Program? There are two.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Before we move on to 9.2, I'd like to make a recommendation to Dr. Davis that we request that Tiffany Richardson, who's the School Board Association attorney, come in to meet with our board so we can have clarifying questions to ask her, especially when it's concerning students and student expulsion and appeals. Because I want to make sure that when we are determining the educational life of our students, that we have accurate information. So I'd love to be able to have Tiffany Richardson, who's the attorney from the School Board Association, to come in and to conduct a workshop with us so we can ask questions. Because I think it's fair to our students, fair to the parents and our constituents that when we're making decisions on the educational life of students, that we have accurate information before, and we're able to ask questions to the hearing officer to clarify questions that we may need to make, sound decisions and judgment.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Item 9.2, Student Admission Requests into the District's Adult Education Program. Is there a motion with regard to the two students?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation that we accept the student admission requests into the district's adult education program as provided by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will... Oh, please verify that it's accurate on screen, Mr. Manning. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. At this time, we'll cast our votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. We can disregard item 9.3 as we did not discuss the charter... I'm sorry.
There's actually a...
Oh, we do, we do.
There is an item.
Madam Chair.
There is. I'm sorry. My mistake. Item 9.3, we do need to approve the charter schools contract. I apologize. Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the charter school contract effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, with terms as outlined in the contractual agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly... I've got two seconds. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the contract as presented. Is there any discussion? If not, if you could verify on script...
Yeah, I have a question. I thought it was the understanding that we will renew the contract for one year and revisit that every year. Is that not correct?
No, 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 it's not. It wasn't for one... It wasn't for one year. It wasn't for one year.
Yeah, if I can get Dr. Davis to address that, thank you.
Initially, we had conversations about doing that, and then we opted not to do that. We agreed to increase it, to allow for more time, but we will aim to look at their performance. And if the performance is not at a certain level, we have certain options to make in making a decision about whether or not the program will continue. But we agreed that we would not set it for one year.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
You're welcome.
Board members, is the motion before you is that accurate on screen, Mr. Shad? Thank you. At this time, we'll cast our votes. I'm sorry. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Item 10, Old Business, No Action Requested, specifically a report on capital improvement update. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before us at this evening Mr. Will Anderson to provide you with your monthly update regarding the status of the Richland Two Bond Projects. Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and Dr. Davis. Here's your monthly update, and happy to answer any questions as we go through. To date, we have our security projects. Fifteen of those front entrances will be starting work in July. They... Some may have started by the end of this week, but design's complete. Bids have gone out, and so the work on those front entrances will... For 15 schools, we'll begin in July with the... Still the goal to get those complete before school starts. We also doing some fencing projects at several schools with that work, construction beginning in July as well. Some other safety projects that are going on to address some other safety needs in the school. Roof replacements at Dent Middle School, Rice Creek, and Condor. Those bid packages went out yesterday, and those will be addressed with the construction soon. There will be some construction throughout the year on those roof projects. There are more... It'll take about four to six months for those projects, but we will be working with the school and the contractor to make sure there's no disruption in the learning environment. And we are in the design of three, and I left off one, Ridgeview High School's HVAC design to address that HVAC, and we'll have that completed soon and then move into the construction phase to address the HVAC at those schools. the construction phase to address the HVAC at those schools. And as a reminder, these are just where we are in some of these projects. There's a lot of other projects that have not started yet that we'll, we'll address as we get down on the line. For this, for those replacement schools and additions, we are done with the schematic design for Blythewood High School and CFK North. So where we're at now, and that means we're now starting to take those more renderings and turn those into a reality, into more of the finishings and things that are in that nature. So we're really moving along there with construction scheduled to start at Blythewood High School and CFK North in January. We have already decided to move portables right now. The initial thought was to move portables, do different things during Christmas break, but we worked with the principals to move portables and set the school up now for both Blythewood and CFK North so that there's no change mid-year. So Blythewood High School is going to be floating more than they currently are as we're going, moving some portables down. They'll be a little difference in terms of how the buses and how the car rider loops come in. Same thing with CFK North. We've adjusted some of their portables. Sean Bishon at Muller Road has been graciously to host a couple of more classes inside the school, and so we can have more space to build those schools. So we're doing that now so that there's no disruption throughout the year, but for the next couple of years, it'll be some interesting times at those campuses, but we've got a good plan in place as we move forward. For the other replacement schools and additions, we are in the planning, programming, and site configuration for E.L. Wright, Forest Lake, and Bethel Hanbury, working with the designers and the construction management companies to kind of really get an idea of how the site will work, and then we'll start really digging into the design for Forest Lake, for example. July 9th is our kickoff meeting for Forest Lake's design. Stadiums are about 90% complete. These are some couple of renderings of how we are getting there with the stadiums. We still have to get through some location things, and then once we get to the schematic design complete, we'll start more into those, real more details. But we still have to work through some, some things, making sure this is exactly how we, we want some things to look. There may be some movements of a couple of facilities, a couple of the buildings, but you kind of get an idea, it is what it is for these, for these football stadiums, for these stadiums in general, is to have the, the, the service, the concessions, the locker rooms, et cetera, around those fields. But just one thing to point out on this, is you can see the difference that we have working with Northeast, flat piece of land and those yellow and green lines, the contour lines at Ridgeview, so it just makes it much more difficult. But we're, we're on progress to start that in November, December construction, and then we will, it'll be a 12-month process. We met today with the A.D.s to discuss the scheduling for spring sports for 2020. There will be some disruption for the spring sports that use those two fields that will be basically off limits because of the safety concerns. And so we're working through the scheduling now to have those sports not miss a beat, but we have to make sure, there'll be some challenges during the 2020 spring season. Some other renovation projects that are underway, that's the Support Service Center, Blythewood Academy, Killian Bus Hub, and W.R. Rogers are also very close to being done with schematic, and construction is scheduled to start on those in the, in the fall as well, fall into the winter. And then we just started the design work, the programming work, so we're very, very early on in the Richland Northeast and Ridgeview High School renovation projects there. Lastly, other projects we have going on, we have just gone through the selection process for a vendor consultant to help us transfer, get all of our new cameras, get all brand-new camera systems throughout the district. So that process is currently finalizing there. We're updating and rolling out a new visitor management system to, that has some more connection to Power School. The IT displays project, which was mentioned in your board brief, is about eight to 12-month project that's going underway right now. And then we got a report yesterday that our buses will be here at the end of July. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Mr. Anderson, as always, thank you for the updates, the constant updates, and I don't think we asked for them. You just volunteered to make sure that we have those. So, Dr. Davis, we appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments from board members with regard to Mr. Anderson's update? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you keeping us posted. Thank you so much. Moving right along in our agenda, we have arrived at item 11, old business, action requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, if you remember, on June the 11th, we brought before you the following policies for proposal. There are policies GDQB resignation of support staff, GDO evaluation of support staff, GD support staff slash classified staff, GCA professional staff positions, GCCAF professional staff academic leave, GDBC support staff supplementary pay slash overtime, and GCD administrative staff vacations and holidays. I forwarded an email to you all on, I believe it was yesterday, sharing some additional edits that were received from Mrs. Agostini on Monday, the 24th, and administration is making the additional editorial recommendations and adding them to these policies. And so we bring these policies before you for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Is there, it's Mr. Manning.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve policy revision GDQB resignation of support staff, GDO evaluation of support staff, GD support slash classified staff, revision GTA professional staff positions, policy GCCAF professional staff academic leave, GDBC support staff supplementary pay slash overtime, revision GCD administrative staff vacations and holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded that we receive, that we approve policies GDQB, GDO, GD, GTA, GCCAF, GDBC, GCD, with the recommended revisions and edits that were provided ahead of time. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We will call for the question, and Mr. Manning, if you would just, oh, there it is. If you would just verify the accuracy of the motion you made on screen before we cast our votes. That was fast. Thank you.
I believe that my eyes didn't cross the wrong way, and it looks accurate.
Okay. At this time, we will cast our votes. We can do, we can do a hand vote. And Dr. Elkins Johnson can acknowledge yea or nay verbally, but let's, I'm sorry. Let's do a hand vote. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Moving on to item 12, new business, no action requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, if you also recall, on June the 11th, we brought before you the proposal for the 2020-2021 academic school calendar. We're bringing this policy back before you for second reading and for approval of the calendar for the 2020-2021 academic year.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the recommended calendar for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the 2020-2021 calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll cast our votes. We did get a pop-up. Thank you, Mr. Price. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Now, moving on to item 12. Dr. Davis. New business, no action requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we're bringing before you the following policies for first reading and proposal you received, the South Carolina School Board Association revision sent on 6/12/19, followed by the policies and recommendations from administration. The policies that we are proposing this afternoon and this evening will be policies GCQC/GCQD, which will be resignations of instructional staff, administrative staff, GCQA/GCQB instructional staff, administrative staff reduction in force, GCQF discipline suspension and dismissal of professional staff, GDR non-school employment of support staff, GDF support staff hiring, GDD support staff vacations and holidays, GBK staff concerns, complaints, and grievances, proposals to ADC tobacco-free, GICG tobacco use by students, GBED tobacco-free schools, and IKEA high school credit for middle school.
Since this is our first reading, we've gotten these in advance, but it's our first one, and I'll go through one by one and ask if anyone has any questions regarding each policy. The first one, policy revisions, thank you, Dr. Davis. GCQC, GCQD resignation of instructional staff, administrative staff. Is there, are there any questions or comments from board members with regard to this policy, Mrs. Agostini?
I have a contact, or a comment, just to see, possibly to make it clearer. If you're looking at the second paragraph, the second sentence, if we could add, with a documented board vote, comma, the board may send a formal complaint to the state board of education, and you can read on, and then we could eliminate later on. However, there must be documentation that the board voted to send the complaint. I'd like to see that we stayed upfront, that the board must vote on it versus have it come later.
So it's not a contextual recommendation you're making, just a formatting?
Yes.
There is a recommendation on the floor with regard to rewording that sentence, board members? If there's no opposition. I don't know. Where, what part of the policy are you making reference to? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are you on GCQC, the first policy?
Yes.
I don't see it. I don't. So this is the second sentence of the second paragraph?
Yes.
When the superintendent does not accept the resignation and the employee fails to continue to perform his or her contractual duties, the superintendent will report the breach of contract to the board.
Right.
Okay. And you said you wanted, your recommendation was to add something?
Dr. Elkins Johnson, this is Mr. Shad. I believe what you're referring to is if, as I read it, if the employee informs the district through the superintendent that they want to resign, they have the right to do that. However, the superintendent cannot accept the resignation, which means that that person is still considered an employee. Then they have a decision to make. They can continue to work, or they can choose not to. If they choose not to, then the superintendent will report that as a breach of contract to the board, and then the board will formally make a complaint to the state board of education. Right, that's how I'm reading it. It has to come to us first, and then we, and he, and in fact, our superintendent doesn't send it to the board of education, we do.
Yeah, that's how it's stated now. I think what you're, I think the recommendation that you're asking is actually how it reads right now. That's how it reads right now. ... regard to their breach of contract? Is that what you're saying?
I was going to say, I think I understand what she's saying. She wants to be able to have the employee who wants to resign, if it is denied, appeal the board and not go with the superintendent's decision. Is that what you're saying?
Right. I want that person to be able to come in and speak so we can hear from the person. Because sometimes you get secondhand information and not allow the person to come in to give us their side as to why they may want to resign or whatever it may be that's going on in their life. And I, I think it's fair to our employees since we call ourselves a family to allow them to come in and speak to board members before anything is recommended to the board of education.
Dr. Davis.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, this is Dr. Davis. I, I understand what you're requesting. I respectfully ask for reconsideration of that, of that insertion from the board. Essentially, the only time that this would be, most of the time with this is an issue when employee is not allowed to resign, is after the employee has signed his or her contract and has agreed to report to his or her designated location, and then after the deadline that they have been allowed to be released from their contract, employees are not being allowed to be released from their contract, which will create vacancies on our school, in our school. I think it will put us at an unfair disadvantage with the shortage of teachers that we have in the state of South Carolina to have such an issue where an employee could appeal his or her decision to the board to be released from their agreed-upon contract when they already have a set protocol, a set time period to be released from that contract. If they come to us and the, and the request is a legitimate request, trans, if the student person is moving away, spouse is military, or spouse is taking a job, things of that nature, they're being allowed to be released from those contracts. If they are not, then, then they are being asked to honor the contract as we are required to honor the contract because we have a certain time to notify them that they will be, they will be employed by the district.
Right. And I understand what you're saying, Dr. Davis, and thank you for that, but I respectfully disagree. And the reason being is we have a practice in Richland Two that depending on who the person is sometimes, we release them even when we don't have a replacement. And I've seen that in my time on the board, where depending on the principal, or depending on the person, or depending on who the person has contact with in the district, that we allow them to be released, and others can't have that same respect of being released. And another example of that is reading coach. We know that as a reading coach, you have the same certification, and you sign the contract as a teacher. However, as a reading coach, you're not working in the capacity of a teacher. You're working with small groups, you're working outside, and we don't honor that as a promotion. Therefore, we deny someone the opportunity to get a promotion because basically that's a promotion. So again, I respectfully ask my colleagues on the board to consider that when there is a resignation, that we allow the person to come in and speak with us if there is at least one board member making that request.
Dr. Holmes?
Dr. Holmes? Yes, I understand exactly what Dr. Elkins is saying. Generally, when, I understand what Dr. Davis is saying also about allowing people to leave with their contracts, but herein lies the problem. It does, that, that reading coach situation was a situation that I am aware of, even though on teacher contracts... though on teacher contracts, guidance says teacher a lot of times in certain districts, reading coach may say teacher on your contract, but in actuality, that's actually a promotion for the person. So if we're holding people to that, and I think those people should at least be allowed an opportunity to at least address their concern to the board because that's money for that individual teacher that we are denying them. So I don't see where it would hurt, and they still may be denied, but I don't see where it would hurt that as a board, since we're supposed to just not be here for children, but also the teachers of the district, that we allow them to at least air their grievance with us.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have deep reservations in the suggestion. One, I believe we already have policy and I'm going to just piggyback on what Dr. Holmes just stated. If it's a grievance, then we already have a grievance policy in place. So the scenario where someone offers a resignation, the superintendent decides not to accept that resignation, then that person can then go through the grievance policy, which may allow them to have a voice or to be heard before the board rather than, and the second, rather than in this, in this policy. The second, the second point.
Let me let him finish his comment.
The second point.
I just want to let him know that there's another part about grievance right now, so we'll have to go back to that.
Let, let.
As well.
The second point is, I don't, I'm not comfortable with if Dr. Elkins Johnson's, if, well, if it's the will of the board, that what she's suggesting goes forward, that it would be allowable for one member of the board to make that request because that's obviously not the will of the board. As we're doing many things like we're doing right now, it would be perhaps helpful to see what the will of the board is with regard to taking on, I guess, this extrajudicial request of that aggrieved party. But again, I think that's better kept in the grievance position. So I'm, I'm not in favor. I just want to be on record for that.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Thank you, Mr.
If it's been in the grievance, we will have to go back to that grievance policy and insert that. If no, it's not there.
Dr. Caution Parker?
Um, I, I disagree with Dr. Elkins Johnson, and I do believe that anytime that as a board, we're going to hear anything from any employee, it has got to be the majority of the board rules. We can't even make a decision and pass anything without the majority of the board. So I think it, we don't need to leave it just as one board member because it could be someone that this board member knows. I think that in all fairness, it needs to be the majority of the board, just like we do with any other decisions that we make. I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
Mr. Manning?
Madam Chair, I am in favor of the recommendation that Ms. Agostini made for the grammatical change. I am not in favor of the other recommendation for the grievance component.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And just, just to be clear, the recommendation that, that, you're right, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on the board members? And I'm, I'm okay with, with the way it is. I trust the grievance process. I'm okay with, with the way it is. So we've got four, four board members. We do need to make a, a formal, a formal motion. Dr. Johnson, would you like to make a motion? Or we've got four, four members who are, I think, okay with the policy as it reads, trusting that the process will make sure that the teacher's concerns are captured. And three, if I understand, who are not.
Right. But I guess going back to what everyone is saying, we don't have a policy in place whether it's one board member or whether it's the majority in our grievance. And we need to have something in place, just like when we hear student cases.
Madam Chair.
Or there is at least one board member who's requesting to hear the case.
Mr.
We allow that. And I think that's fair. I think it's joy, families, that we support them and we want to hear what they have to say.
Mr. Shad?
As well as our teachers.
Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Elkins Johnson and other members of the board, we, we already have a policy under GBK, which covers complaints and grievances. And then there's an administrative rule, GBK dash R, which allows for an aggrieved employee, if they are not satisfied with the superintendent's decision, they may request a meeting before the Board of Trustees. And then we will, if allowed, we can agree to hear that meeting, have, conduct that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Since we do have division in the board, Dr. Elkins Johnson, do you want to frame your suggestion in the form of a motion or?
No, that, that's fine. We can move on.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, we have, we have. Okay. Any other questions or concerns regarding this policy, board members? Hearing none. We will move on to the next policy. Policy GDO, policy revisions regarding the evaluation of support staff. Are there questions, comments or concerns from board members? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's try GCQA, GCQB instructional staff, administrative staff, reduction in force. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. We'll move on to policy revisions to GCQF, discipline, suspension and dismissal of professional staff. Questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Agostini?
Madam Chair, I just, I need clarification on the first sentence. I, I just don't understand what it's, this policy is trying to say, whether it's just an awkward sentence, if we can clean it up.
The first sentence reads as follows. It is the policy of the board to remove from employment any professional staff member who fails or who may be incompetent to follow directives of the superintendent or work in the district.
I, I'm sorry. I just, and it's maybe or work in the district. Or maybe there need to be commas in there or something, but it just seems to be a long run-on sentence. What is the point?
Um, the point of this is to make sure that we ensure that we have people who are competent to work here in the district, who understands that they need to follow directives of the superintendent or the work of the district.
Yeah, I understand it as it reads. Is there a suggestion that you wanted to make, Mrs. Agostini?
No, I, I don't have a suggestion because I couldn't get the content of it. So I, I'll take a look at it again, but I, I just still struggle. I think that it needs to be more clear on what we're actually trying to say. And I'm happy to take suggestions.
Questions or comments from board members?
Madam Chair.
Hearing none. I'm sorry, Mr. Manning?
I mean, I guess we could clarify where it says or work in the district because that just makes it sound like they're, it's just working in the district. Maybe some adjective about the, the level of work or competency of the work or something, if that makes sense.
Is it meant to be broad sweeping though? Is it meant to be broad sweeping? It's a broad, is it supposed to be specified to a certain level of employee?
It is presented in language sent by the School Board Association.
Mr. Shad?
Madam Chair, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to pull, pull on my whole English skills. I think, first of all, I didn't see anything wrong with it, but if we're talking about specifically the work in the district, I think that goes back to the two things, a member who fails, so a member who fails to work in the district as well as a member who may be incompetent to work in the district. That's how I'm looking at it. Of course, it also goes to say a member who fails to follow directives of the superintendent as well as a member who may be incompetent to follow directives of the superintendent. So it's really those two expectations is you follow the directs of the superintendent or working in the district. And if you are incompetent in that sense, or if you fail to do so, then the board's policy is to remove the person from that position. That's how I'm reading it.
If we may, administration can look at this sentence and present a revised sentence to the board if that's the will of the board.
That's the will of the board. I, I understand how it reads. As, as, but the board would rather have that. I'm fine with that. Mrs. Agostini, would you like for the administration to make?
I would love for you to look at it and rewrite, write it. You all do a great job doing that when we have some confusion up here. I would appreciate it.
Additional questions or questions from board members? Hearing none. Moving on to policy revision for policy GDR, non-school employment of support staff. Questions or comments from board members?
Madam Chair, at the June 11th board meeting, the board approved policy GCR, non-school employment of staff. As approved, as approved, policy GCR addressed all employees, both professional and support staff. Therefore, the contents of the policy in GDR are no longer needed.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that explanation.
Thank you.
Moving on to the policy revision in GDF, support staff hiring. Questions, comments or concerns from board members? Hearing none. We'll move on to policy revision to GDD, support staff vacations and holidays. Questions or concerns from board members? Hearing none. We'll move on to the policy revisions of GBK.
Madam Chair.
Staff concerns slash complaints and grievances. Questions or concerns from board members? Dr. Holmes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a concern about GBK.
Okay.
And I'm just going to, I spoke with, I just want to make sure we have a clarity on GBK. The concern there is with the teacher employment of the continuing contract teachers, I want to make sure that I know with teachers that are riffed, being riffed, there's no grievance process. And I also know provisional contracts for new teachers, there is no appeal context for them either. But I want to make sure because there was an attachment with the statute 5925410 on there that does kind of make mention to that, but I want to make sure I got clarity on that, that we're not, we're not saying that teachers who are continuing contract status or seasoned teachers do not have the right to appeal. I just want to make sure that that's not what we're saying in that process and they have the right to appeal through the grievance process. Because as it reads, it's a little confusing there and I did not, I wanted to make sure for clarity that continuing contract teachers have the right to appeal to the board for non-renewal of their contracts and that it's not just a superintendent decision. No offense, Dr. Davis, but I just want to make sure that we have that in there, that that's the understanding that that is part of the grievance process. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, if I may, for, for matters related to teacher dismissal, we follow the procedure specified in the Teacher Employment and Dismissal Act, which is referenced in policy GCQF, discipline, suspension and dismissal of professional staff. In accordance with the act, the final level of appeal is, is the board and includes a full evidentiary hearing. Policy GBK is our procedure for handling grievances related to other matters such as lack of policy, unfair policy, deviation from policy or misapplication or misinterpretation of policy. Some suggested wording we had because we did receive your email today, and if this is at the will of the board, the procedures expressed in this policy are not applicable for actions related to teacher dismissal or reduction in force. Actions related to teacher dismissal are subject to the guidelines of the Teacher Employment and Dismissal Act. Actions related to reduction in force are subject to policy GCK reduction in force.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had that clarity. Thank you for rewording that. Appreciate it.
Dr. Holmes, no, no offense taken.
Okay.
I was waiting to see.
And thanks for sharing that with us.
Got to look out for the teachers.
And thanks for sharing that, Dr. Holmes, as well, in your email. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes. My question is if you go down to the fourth paragraph, which it starts, it is important to establish grievance, but if you come down to the last two lines, it says, "All appeals for such an extension of time would be to the superintendent whose decision would be final." And I think it's back to my question before, I didn't realize the superintendent made the final decision. I thought, uh, the final decision comes from the board. So I would like to see that removed.
Mr. Shad?
That the final decision would be with the superintendent.
It's not. Mr. Shad?
Thank you. Dr. Elkins Johnson, you are.
Can I get Dr. Davis to address this for me?
He is though. It's, it's only about the extension of time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
I will just state that it is important to settle grievances as quickly as possible. And then it goes on, if an extension of time for the person to resolve their grievance, then decision with regard to the extension of time is final by the superintendent. But that does not dismiss that person's right to grieve the board. That does not make, that does not usurp that person's right to go to the board once that superintendent has made that decision. It's only as to the extension of time as I read the suggestion by the School Board Association.
Right.
Okay. And if I could have Dr. Davis to verify that for me, because he's working as the superintendent. But, Mr. Shad, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. My pleasure. Thought, thank you, Dr. Elkins. That is, that is indeed correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. And I'm looking for clarification in the same paragraph where it says, therefore, there will be no extension of the prescribed time for moving through the grievance procedure. Where is the time, where is that indicated?
It's in, it's in GBKR.
Could we make a reference to that in this policy as to where to find the time?
Is that the will of the board to insert which, specifically which policy it is?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me. It's fine with me.
I support that.
Additional questions or concerns from board members?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
Well, maybe I need to look at it, but isn't it in the grievance form which shows them?
The policy.
So for them to even formally grieve, they're going to see it in the form and fill out the form, which talks about the extension of time and that sort of thing, correct? And, and I might be taking a stab, but when is the grievance, I guess it's the administrative rule, GP, GBKR, is that given to the employee or, so they have it as well? Okay. Well, I mean, I'm not in favor.
Anytime an employee brings a grievance, the first thing we, after listening and having a conference with the employee, we ask the employee to go back and complete the grievance form and through the grievance process. So i.e. if an employee brings the grievance directly to the superintendent without taking the grievance initially to their supervising authority, we have them go back and follow the grievance process, process as is outlined in the policy. That way, we don't have an issue of skipping any steps or skipping over appropriate levels. They are given the form. On that form, there, there are specific questions or, or the template asks specifically one important question, which is what is the resolution that you are seeking? But it does in GBKR, it tells them the time they have to file the grievance. This allows us, having a time limit gives us an opportunity to, you're not filing a grievance on an issue that what happened three years ago. And you're bringing the grievance up today.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
And thank you for explaining that. I would just like a reference so that they know where to look to, to find out.
Yeah, I agree.
What the timeframe is. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think anyone was opposed. I think he was, Mr. Shad was making clarification. I don't think anyone was opposed to the suggestion. Thank you. Moving on to policy revisions, ADC tobacco-free school district. Dr. Davis? I'm sorry, are there any questions or concerns with regard to this policy from board members?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
And this goes along with all tobacco, all three of these policies. When we're looking at the second page, what the board question, that the board commits to following, and the third lines of, that's the will of the board, all tobacco products and all community products were associated with, this is probably the board at a district-sponsored event.
If that's the will of the board, yes, ma'am. Board members, what is your pleasure with regard to the insertion? And the insertion was on school property or district-sponsored event?
I support that.
With silence being consent, okay, we're moving on. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any further?
I have one of the.
That's on all, that's on all three policies, correct?
It's on all three policies that's missing.
Yeah, the three policies are verbatim.
Yeah, they're pretty much the same. So, um, actually, this is on a different one of the three policies.
Yeah, the three policies are verbatim.
Yeah, they're pretty much the same. So, um, actually, this is on a different one of the three policies.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
So that idea that we're prohibiting the possession of those items, that means if an employee has those things in their vehicle, in their purse, I mean, and somebody finds out about it, then that's, they're in violation of the policy just by having, having it on them. Is that part of a traditional tobacco-free environment to not even have it in your possession? That's for students? Okay, but that, so that's for staff as well, though, that they can't have those things? Because it just says tobacco-free campus, right? Okay. It gives me a little bit of heartburn to think, you know, teacher who may have some of those products on them, I mean, obviously not using them, but if they happen to have their jewel or whatever in their purse or pocket, that that's a violation of the policy. I, I don't know, it seems a little bit of encroachment, but, I guess I'm fine with, I don't know what the, what would we do to a staff member if we found it on them? Just tell them not to do it again? Don't bring it back?
On the third page of the policy, in this section labeled "Staff", we'll start with the verbal reprimand. Mrs. Agostini?
Madam Chair, just, and one other question. On policy ADC, it's not included, but it is included on policy GBED, under the student portion that you were just making reference to, telling Mr. Manning the, what would be done for mandatory enrollment in tobacco prevention, education, or cessation programs. It's only included on that policy. Should we have that included on all three?
It should be, because they should be identical policy.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions or concerns from board members with regard to this policy? Hearing none. We'll move on to policy revisions to policy JICG, Tobacco Use by Students. Questions or comments from board members? Moving on to policy JICG, Tobacco Use by Students, and yeah, they're, they're essentially the same. But I will give people an opportunity to say something if you need to. If not, we will move on to the policy revisions to GBED, Tobacco-Free Schools. Moving right along, to policy IKEA, High School Credit for Middle School. Thank you.
I have a question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, on policy IKEA, that last bullet, I know in some of our policies, we indicate superintendent or his designee. But are we going to define what designee means? Because it can mean different things on different policies. And on this, it says middle school, they only offer credit via courses that are approved by the superintendent for his or her designee. Dr. Davis, who would be considered a designee for this policy?
That's a good question, Dr.--
Different for this policy?
Yes, ma'am, that's a good question, Dr. Elkins Johnson. That, that would then be the chief for, for teaching and learning, which would be Ms. Nancy Gregory.
So should we insert, instead of his or her designee, the chief or of teaching and learning? Or would that just be understood?
I think it would be understood, because if there was a situation, let's say we did a reorg and that then responsibility fell to someone else. For example, one day we had an assistant superintendent for instruction, then it would then, that would be the person that that would fall under. So it would be the designee of the superintendent as he or she sees fit. So I would not give it a specific title, but just allow, the designee allows for the flexibility for that person, that to be assigned to the appropriate person. But in this case, it would be Ms. Nancy Gregory. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I have a little concern about some policies that have that. We, if someone was just reading this, they would not know who the designee is on this. If someone just wanted to pull up the policy and find out, okay, it's either the superintendent or A or B. They don't know that. And, you know, designee is defined so differently on different policies. So I, I hope that maybe one day we can kind of close the gap of what the designee means or be able to insert a position and title there. But thank you.
Mrs. Agostini?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins.
And I've got some questions about this policy, but I concur with Dr. Elkins Johnson on that, on her comments about his or her designee. We seem to be routinely approving different policies. And at one point, it'll be a finance policy, one, it'll be a curriculum policy, a discipline policy. But we've got his or her designee, which can mean a number of various people. And I would like to see more clarity on that, on our policies.
If I may, just kind of give some, some, my perspective on that from the Senator, the superintendent. This doesn't, this exists within the school as well, the principal or his or her designee. The flexibility to be able to sign it to a specific person is why the designee is there. So for example, if it is a financial policy, I, I think it's reasonably understood that you would prefer that to the CFO if it's, if that would be my designee. Or it would be the Chief Human Resource Officer or the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary or Middle Schools, or High Schools. The Executive Director for, if it's planning, then it would be the person that's overseeing planning. That's what the designee would be. But it does give you the flexibility and latitude, because there may be individuals within a, within a organization or within an org chart that could possibly do the job. So if you take, for example, the Executive Director for Accountability or Director for Accountability could be my designee. So all employees, based on their ability to perform, the task falls under the guidance of the superintendent that allows the superintendent to do the administrative work of the district without being handicapped or handcuffed and making those types of, only allowing the specific person or title outline. If you did that, I could not pass on any responsibilities to anyone else. I could only give it to that person by Board policy. But by having designee, the superintendent has the latitude to assign it to the appropriate person and exercise his administrative discretion and getting the job done.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Mr. Shad?
Uh, Dr. Davis, if, I know we've had at least some policy where we were talking about the Chief Financial Officer being your designee. Is that right?
Ten-four, yes, sir.
Okay, and if, heaven forbid, our Chief Financial Officer was on vacation or sick for a period of time and a decision needed to be made, I'm sure there's someone in his department that you would then assign as the designee to make that call.
Would be the Executive Director for Finance. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I would imagine that would be a reason why you would want to have that flexibility so that that Executive Director can make that call as opposed to us putting in policy that it had to be made by you or the Chief Financial Officer. Because there may be a circumstance, both of y'all may be at a conference or something at the same time, but a decision needed to be made, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Additional questions or concerns regarding this policy?
Yes, the comment. Thank you, Mr. Shad. But we just hope that we do, and we know that Dr. Davis does this. But again, when we're doing policies, we're not doing it only for the superintendent that's current. We're doing it for future superintendents also. So I just hope and pray that we continue to place a superintendent in place that will make sound decisions for the designee and not destroy anyone as a designee.
I totally agree.
I mean, I've gone through three or four superintendents. So I know when we designate designee, that means different things for different people. But, Mr. Shad--
That's true.
Thank you for your scenario.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, it's my hope and prayer that this is the last one you would have to deal with.
I concur. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Additional questions, Mrs. Agostini?
Madam Chair, thank you. And now back to the content of the policy. A question about, and just seeking clarity again on bullet point number two in terms of the world language credit. If a student were in middle school and they took two years, seventh and eighth grade, foreign language, would they get two years' credit or would they get one year' credit?
Good evening. No, ma'am, they get one year' credit for that.
Thank you. And then I would like to see just one additional, some wording added, and it's to the fourth bullet point. And because I was a parent that had to deal with this or was concerned about this when my daughter, I thought about when we introduced the digits program and I wasn't sure where we were going to go. I moved her up in math just to get her out of digits, but I was worried about her taking the algebra in the eighth grade. So I would like added to the end of the, the, this bullet point without penalty. So that's very clear to people that the students can retake the class in the ninth grade and not have a penalty.
Mrs. Agostini, you said bullet point four, bullet four?
Oh, bullet six, excuse me. Okay. I started at bullet point, yeah, the highlighted one. So yes, it's bullet point six. Thank you. The courses for which a student received credit toward his or her high school graduation will become a part of a student's high school transcript and will be included in her, included in calculations of the high school grade point ratio and class rank. During his or her ninth grade, a student may retake a high school credit course that he, she initially took during his, her middle school years without penalty.
Just as a, I think, some, we need to do some research on that to make sure that that can be done, because you're taking a high school credit at the middle school level. And if you retake it, there's a certain calculations that has to be done. It would be no different than if you were a ninth grader and you retook the same class in 10th grade. Those, those classes are, no?
I, I have to answer. I did, I did have to answer, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Currently, the current UGP, which was just adopted, take, we will take the highest grade earned for the course for a student.
Excellent. Thank you.
If the student chooses to retake the course.
Okay. So--
So we can add that?
Okay, thank you.
Just to, so that parents are aware of the policy. We can add that part that they will receive the highest grade.
The highest grade earned.
That would be great, to add the highest grade between the two. That would be super.
Additional questions or concerns from board members with regard to this policy? Thank you so much. Moving on to item 12.12, report superintendent's end of the year report, which I always enjoy, this portion of the year. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the Board. This says, "Our last board meeting for the academic year of 2018, 2019. And as has been customary with many of our superintendents in our school district, we provided you all with a year in review, kind of an update on how we progressed throughout the year. So I'm not going to bore you with too many of the details, because as the hour gets laced. But I do want to share, you will find this information in the Board, in your Board documents. We started out the year focusing on ILEAD. Part of ILEAD is our, is basically our mantra for how we should be leading in the district. The I stands for inspiring, developing others. L is to lead innovation and positive change. E, which we spent quite a bit of time on this year, is exhibiting a sense of urgency in all that we do. A is achieving and delivering premier results each and every day. And D is to demonstrate integrity and character at all times. And so these are the things that we've shared with our administrators at the beginning of the school year on how we would like for them to conduct themselves as they are leading their schools or their individual divisions or, or programs. This is just some numbers for the school district for this year. As you can see, compared to where we were on the 90th day and, on the 17, 18th school year, at 22,000, 28,062 kids, students. On the 90th day of the 18, 19th school year, pre-K through 12, our student body population was at 28,565. You may ask the question, why is this pertinent? Well, it continues to show that our district is continuing to grow and families are desiring to move into Richland School District 2 to educate their students. This is a breakdown of our, our student population, giving you some idea about our diversity. We pride, pride ourselves on being one of the more diverse school districts in the state, but also, we are also one of the most, we strive to be one of the most inclusive school districts in the state. And so you can see our population is about 60% African-American, 21% white, 11% Hispanic. That number continues to grow. I remember when that number was about 5%. That continues to grow seemingly every year. And then about 3% of our students are Asian and about 5% of our students are of different ethnicities. Currently, we have about 54.8% of our students, so almost 55% of our students are at or below poverty in Richland School District 2. Some idea about where we are with teacher ratios, teacher student, teacher-pupil ratios. And you can see at the elementary level, this year we were about 18.6 to 1. At the high school level, we were roughly at 18 to 1 and given us a district average of 17.9 or roughly 18 to 1. Our employee count, 2,005 certified staff, this is good numbers. I've get asked this question quite a bit. How many certified staff do we have? How many support staff do we have? We have about 1,500 support staff and we have 121 administrators here in Richland School District 2. So the vast majority of our employee, employees are our certified staff populations. Again, this is, these are some numbers regarding achievement. One of the things that we received early in the year was some, some shared concerns from our public about disaggregating some of our data as relates to our student population when it comes to achievement. And so I've tried to provide you all with some information regarding this year's or the 2017, 2018 student performance within our district. You can see by, represented by the green bar, you can see the percent of students in the state that meet or exceeded expectations. And then where Richland 2 falls in that compared to other school districts in the state. So each bar, blue bar represents a school district. So you see where we are this year in, from last year in the state. I do want to say, I think it's one of the times that the last few years where we have exceeded the state average in those measures. We still have some way to go, so by no means is 42% is, is where we want to be as we continue to strive to be premier, but it is an indication of where we are performing. This is broken down by ethnicity. So you see where the students, Asian students in the state are performing and where students, Asian students in Richland School District 2 performing when it comes to ELA on SC Ready. Black or African-American students. You can see where Richland 2 performs as relates to the state. Again, 32.7% meeting or exceeds expectations for ELA for 2017, 2018. It's not where we want to be. But when compared to the state and compared to other school districts throughout the state, you see where we line up at as relates to that. So about fourth from the top in that, in that essence. So we want to be outperforming all of our school districts in it relates to this when we look at our data. And so we're continuing to progress, but we are moving in the right direction. Hispanic students, again, outperforming the state at 36.3%, but not quite where we want to be as we continue to strive to be premier. Students of more than one ethnicity, again, 52.2%. That's compared to 42% compared to the state. Again, we are continuing to improve in those areas. And then our students, our white students are at 66.4% compared to the state at 54.4%. And that is ELA. The achievement for students in mathematics, you may be looking at the slide. The slide says math at the top, but in the leg, in the heading, it says language, English Language Arts. So I apologize for that not being changed, but these numbers represent our math performance. Again, for all students, slightly above the state. It's not enough distance, so we're going to continue to, continue to impress on improving our mathematics performance. Although we're outperforming the state slightly, that's not enough of a margin. We will continue to work, of course, with our Asian students at 81.3% outperforming the state, and you see where they rank when it comes to the state of South Carolina. Our black and African-American students, again, the state's average is about 24.3%. We're about 34.4% and within about the top six or seven school districts as it relates to our African-American students exceeding, meeting or exceeding expectations when it comes to mathematics. Again, our Hispanic students are relatively even with the state performance. And our students of one or more, of more than one ethnicity, again, outperforming the state here and in the top four or so within the state on how those students are performing in mathematics for SC, SC Ready. And then our white students are at 69%, relatively, again, at the very top as compared to other states, other districts in the state and exceeding-- exceeding the state average. So we are, we are, as we continue to strive for premier, when you look at the measures for each category of performance for SC Ready and you look at each demographic for SC Ready, Richland Two is positioned to continue to grow, but we're also at this current time outperforming of the state and most of the school districts within, within, within the state. Let's talk a little bit about, share a little bit of information about professional learning opportunities that we've had in the district this year. As you all know, we have focused on cultural relevant teaching cohort that has just concluded. And they spent, I think their concluding activity, spent some time in Washington DC, which seemed from Twitter and Instagram and other social medias, like they had a great time. I didn't get an invitation, but that's okay. But they had an opportunity to, I know, visit the African American History Museum and spend some time as well and other, other cultural activities and events. So it was a wonderful cohort of teachers. We started the year off, if you remember, with the Disney customer service training that we had right here at R2I2, where we had Disney come in to share with us basically how they do customer service in, at Disney, to share and have a focus on customer service, which was one of the things that we were charged with at the beginning of the year. That also led to our Chick-fil-A customer service training where we identified another exceptional organization that focuses on customer service and went through their training. This led to a, basically a customer service task force specifically when it comes to our classified staff, many of our executive assistants, secretaries, bookkeepers and aides, those individuals who are touching the public on a day-to-day basis. I have, I've been working on a task force to, to increase our level and knowledge of customer service and improve customer service across the district. We've had summer institute training for professional learning, and these are just snippets of some of the things that we've done this year. And we're focusing on Avid. And so we have a group right now in Tampa that is, that are going through Avid training as well as having, Avid will be here during the school year to conduct some training for, for our staff and for our administrators. And we've continued, I think this is the eighth year with the SC Midland Summit. I believe we had roughly about 600, 650 participants in the Midland Summit. If you hadn't had an opportunity to come to the Midland Summit, it's a wonderful professional learning activity that's, that was born and, and conceived right here in Richland Two. We have individuals from across South Carolina as well as other states that attend this conference, this two-day conference. And this is a conference that focuses on instructional technology, a technology in the classroom, how to better use technology in the classroom from an instructional perspective. So a wonderful conference and we're glad to offer it. When Mr. Patrick Kelly came to the district office, as you know, Patrick is, has a unique position as our coordinator for professional learning for our teachers. It is kind of a hybrid model where he is still teaching his courses, a few courses at Blythewood High School, but he's also serving here at the district office and helping us to help us develop our teaching ranks and give them some leadership skills, some advocacy skills and the things of that nature. This year, they hosted a Teach to Lead Summit right here at R2I2 in the 18th through the 19th. And I think we had about 60 teachers from across the district, 80, 80 teachers from across the district come and participate in this professional learning activity, all focused on growing our leadership from within the ranks, starting right in our classrooms and giving our teachers an opportunity to learn valuable leadership skills and finding opportunities for them to demonstrate their talents and provide them an opportunity for their, a platform for that opportunity. The MedPro 21 Diversity Articulation Summer Institute is another example that we've had where we've, of course, received the MedPro 21 grant. And then this summer institute, they, of course, focusing on diversity within the classroom and how to embrace diversity in our schools and in our classrooms. The recruitment and retention continues as we've all been charged with the responsibility as serving as recruiters of Richland School District Two. It is important that we always remember that we are the chief recruiters of our school district. And so we continue to find alternative pathways, career pathways for our employees with our career pathways fair, as well as our alternative pathways to education certification where we are partnering with Columbia College to provide certification opportunities for those individuals who may not have a certification to teach in our classes, but they are in our schools and in our districts. And we're looking for an opportunity to grow our teaching ranks right here within Richland, within Richland Two. This year, we recognize our first rookie teachers of the block. And this is in partnership with H&R Block. And you see the photos of those individuals who are all recognized as rookie teachers of the year. We thought this was a phenomenal opportunity to recognize and celebrate those first-year teachers. We know it's important, how important it is to make sure that they are, that they are recognized and mentored and also celebrated for being career educators. And so this was our opportunity to identify them and, and spend some love, share some love and celebrate them and their efforts of being great teachers. And I believe it was Julia Beck that ended up becoming our rookie teacher of the year for the school district. So the first time we've ever recognized a rookie teacher of the year, we were, many of you, I think all of you were there for that, for that, that opportunity. Our futures educating signing, future educator signing day, this is the brainchild of our chief human resource officer with, that coordinated by many others here within the district. But it was an opportunity for us to recognize those individuals who have already, those young students have already decided that they are going to go into the teaching profession. And so we had a future educations, educator signing day for them the same way that we do and recognize those athletes who are going on to college to, to further their athletic careers as well as their education. We wanted to do a signing day for those students. They got T-shirts and hats and the promise that if, when they are done, they have a job right here in Richland School District Two. So growing again our own right here in our, in our own backyard. Another thing that, of course, we have, I think, have been front and center on and premier at, from the very onset is safety and security, or at least in our efforts to make sure that our schools are as safe and secure as possible, not just safety from unhardening our school standpoint, but also making sure that we're providing a safe and secure environment for learning and teaching for our students from a social emotional standpoint, as, as, as well as a physical standpoint. We've conducted two major drills this year, the first being at this, back in July, where we had our full-fledged, I think it was July last year, we had our full-fledged active shooter drill at Jackson Creek Elementary, a very eye-opening experience on what it is like when you have an active shooter in the school, even down to the logistics of the communication between the schools to EMS, to 911, and then 911 communicating appropriately to EMS to ensure that we have the appropriate people dispatched to the scene. I believe one of the lessons learned was that there was a hitch or a glitch in EMS, 911 notifying EMS. So we had the police department there, the fire department there, but we had a little glitch when it came to EMS getting there on time, which was a lesson learned, something that we need to be mindful of. We've had individuals walk up on makeshift bombs that were planted outside of certain locations. So it was a full-fledged drill. If you didn't have an opportunity to attend, just a brief example of, they did not tell the responding officers of SWAT that it was a drill until they got there. So their response time was real and we had to stop them off the property to make sure that they knew it was a drill before they go inside of the building. And then we've wrapped that up this year here in June, right at the end of school with our reunification drill. And I have some video that I would like to share. I see Dr. Suber is not here anymore, but of, of some of our principals as they were pretending to be our parents and our assistant principals and other administrators were the students. And the logistics to reunification, I immediately shared a email, a, a text message with my colleagues and, and encouraged them, even through a social media, to encourage them if they have not done a reunification drill, they need to do one ASAP. It is a lot more cumbersome than you, you would think it would be to ensure that students are properly matched with their, their parents, that they're housed in a safe location. What do you do if a student, that parent is picking up their student that did not make it? And how would you respond to that? It was a real deal reunification drill. And I'm so happy that we had an opportunity to, to practice it and learn from it. And all these drills were conducted without students because there is some concern about some of the trauma that could be associated with that. So we conducted these full-fledged drills without students, first and foremost, to make sure that our adults in the building understand what's expected of them. To go along with safety and security, as you remember, we did, I love this picture of one of our security officers sitting with our students because as you know, we did some reshuffling to ensure that we had at least a security officer located at our elementary schools that did not have a resource officer assigned to them, which turns out to be, it was, turned out to be a really good model. Those principals love those security officers in their schools, the kids do, and the parents are awfully appreciative of that. We've gotten a lot of positive responses and feedback from that. I'd also like to say that Richland Two was, was indeed the first school district in the Midlands to go to the clear bag procedure, although we didn't necessarily get the press, that other school, I will leave that school district unnamed, got when they went to a clear bag policy at the start of this year. We implemented this policy, which is clearly dated at the bottom of this flyer on January 1, 2019. So it's just friendly competition between us and, and other school districts. But this clear bag policy is another example of us taking steps to ensure that our students and our community is safe when they are at our events. And the last thing that I think, the last few things I'm going to focus on, of course, is our pathways to premier facilities, which Mr. Anderson has shared with you the monthly update for June. We'll continue to share those updates and be transparent with our community on the projects that we have, have outlined. But again, this is an opportunity for, on behalf of my, behalf of the board and the school and the students and our district to thank our public for approving the bond referendum to allow us to address the issues of safety and security and academic needs, our fine arts needs, our athletic needs as well. And so we are very appreciative and does not, and do not take that responsibility lightly. So again, thank you to our community for supporting the district in our efforts to provide premier facilities for our students. And awards, awards and more awards. As Libby shared with you all earlier today, you've had an opportunity, you all have gotten kind of our brag sheet, which is our highlights. And these are just a few awards as they are continuing to roll in. So I won't belabor you with them individually, but we continue to be recognized both statewide and nationally for many of the awards of our students, our community, as well as our administrators are being recognized for achieving national and state acclaim. So Richland Two is a home to many awards this year. And we'll provide a full list of those awards, awards at another time. But I had an opportunity to sit at SCAS this year, and we've had KT, K educator of the year, assistant principal of the year were being celebrated and recognized for their efforts in our district, as well as some of our principals were serving in leadership roles in their various divisions and round tables. The teacher of the year, wow, what a, what a great night at the teacher of the year banquet. We were all there. As I must say, as I shared with one of my superintendents, I had the best-looking board at the, at the event. But we had an opportunity to celebrate the recognition of our teacher of the year, Ms. Sue Weems, who is our first state finalist, I think, since Mr. Patrick Kelly. So it's been about five years since we've had someone be at the level of a state finalist. We're very proud of, of Sue and the team that assisted her as well as her really coming into her own and creating a platform and being a powerful voice for teachers and educators across the state. And again, we wanted to recognize Ms. Julia Beck for being our first district teacher of the year. And again, there are many, many more. We had the first STEM teacher of the year, Mr. Warren Wise, who was also recognized this year. So there are many, many teachers and individuals who've been recognized for state awards and national awards. And then the class of 2019, can you believe we had 1,862 graduates? I know you can because you sat through all of the graduations along with me and you shook almost as many hands as I did. But those 1,862 graduates generated about 147.4 million dollars in scholarship this year. I think our numbers last year was about 113. So tremendous increase in that area. And we're so thankful to all of, of course, our students for their diligence and hard work, their parents who, who are diligent and hardworking and supportive of our students and our schools and our school staff, our teachers and administrators for making sure we had 100, 1,800 students cross the stage and start a new chapter in their lives. And blazing the way, these are just some things that we're kind of leading or things we are working on as we continue to blaze away. Drafting a discipline policy, philosophy, that pathways to promotion is not, as an example of setting the tone and blazing the way. The registered youth apprenticeship program, if you remember, we were the first in the Midlands to have a registered youth apprentice program, which is, serves as a model for the state now. Project Search, our bright ideas Shark Tank, where we've taken pitches from our teachers and administrators from around the district and then take those ideas that make it to the final rounds and then try to bring those to scale. The MedPro 21 grant, we are planning for our first coding magnet this year. We've done some training in the soft rollout for that. And so we'll be prepared at San Lapa to have our very first coding magnet. And in our military partnerships, and we continue to lead the way as one of the premier school districts in working with our military and military families. And there's a big announcement that will be coming down the pipe. I don't want to share yet in conjunction with the military and, and our service with our military families that I'll be ready to share hopefully at the next board meeting regarding that. And I think, how long is the video, Libby?
Three minutes.
Okay, you can show it. Maybe not. That's fine. It's okay. We'll move on. They've seen the premier, I think they've seen the, the promise video, oh, the promise video before. Just one major addition to the promise video, we did get Brigadier General Milford Beagle, Beagle to do a promise snippet for us as well. And you have an opportunity to go back and look at that promise video. But if you remember, we started out the school year with making a promise to our students, to our community, to one another on what we want to do. And we want to remind everyone to revisit their promises each and every day and help, let those promises help govern the work that you do for, that we do for our students, for our teachers and for our administrators, and most importantly, for the Richland Two family and community. And the last thing I'll leave you with is the tagline for the 1920, 20 school year. And that, that, that tagline is simply that premier starts here. So that's going to be our tagline for next year. I've been encouraged to let this just be the tagline for a while. Coming up with, coming up with new ones every year can prove to be difficult. I think we blazed away a lot. And so we're using this year, premier starts here, and it's already grown legs. I see it already on, on hashtags and in our social media feeds. And when we say premier starts here, we're not physically talking about, not first physically talking about the space of our schools and the district. We're talking about right here with, with us as individuals. That premier starts here first and then permeates out throughout the district. And that, ladies and gentlemen, wraps up the year and the end of the year report from the superintendent. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I don't, if there are any questions or comments from board members with regard to your report, I just want to say myself, thank you for providing. There was this way too much stuff to, for you to even include there. There have been so many accomplishments, so many accolades. One of the things that you said when you started superintendent is that you wanted to utilize partnerships in the community. And you see a lot of that all through your end of the year report and things that you tell us as the years, as, you know, as the year goes on. And the safety drill thing, I know the, the safety drill things from a perspective of active shooter drills. So just, just thank you for all that you do. Questions or concerns from board members with regard to Dr. Davis's end of the year report? If not, I'd like to make a point of personal privilege, Mr. Cates, we have a visiting school board member here, the Honorable Michael Cates, who's from Lexington, Richland Five School District, just wanted to acknowledge you, I'm sorry, I just saw you, or I would have said something earlier. It's good to have you here. It's okay, it's good to have you here, welcome. And my daughter, Faith Mackey, just wanted to smile, she's also a Richland Two graduate, and I'm always happy to see family here. And y'all, she's serving as Ms. Claflin, she was recently in Ms. Claflin University, so I'm just so proud of her too, so thankful to have that royalty in the house. Bless you. Item 13.1, agenda items for July 23, 2019, if we could get a motion? I'm sorry. The agenda items for July 23, 2019, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, we, you have before you the proposed items for the July 23, 2019 board meeting. As you were reminded, there is only one board meeting in the month of July. I would start off by possibly making a recommendation to amend this agenda with pushing the executive session start time from 5:30 to 5 o'clock, considering, with your approval because of items that are on this agenda that may need to be addressed in executive session. We will have our executive session items with our student appeals, admissions requests to adult ed, requests for at-home instruction, the superintendent's evaluation, we'll have our inspirational moment, the approval of our current agenda, we'll have special recognitions, should there be any, and I anticipate there will be, the approval of our consent agenda, public participation, our legislative update, we'll have student appeals, voting items in executive session will be student appeals, student admissions requests, and requests for at-home instruction. We'll have the report for capital improvement update, I know we just had that, but this was the only board meeting for the month, so we'll give you that monthly update. We'll have old business action requested, the old business action requested will be those policies that we brought before you this afternoon, this evening for, for proposed, for first readings. Our new business, no action requested, we will bring before you policies, revisions to staff conduct and students, and, and students, which is a new policy, criminal record check, which is a new policy, professional staff, discipline suspension dismissal, support staff, support, staff participation in political activities, personnel records and files, drugs and alcohol, free workplace and schools, staff health, workers' compensation, support staff positions, support staff contracts and compensations, expense authorization reimbursement, community use of district conference facility, and community use of school and district facility, as well as a report for conference center, conference center update report. We'll have agenda items for August 13, the approval of those items, public participation two, should there be one, board superintendent comments, executive session two, voting and executive session items two, and adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Moving on to item 14.1, approval of the agenda items for July 23, 2019, is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the draft agenda for the July 23, 2019 board, regular board meeting, with the call to order an executive session beginning at 5 o'clock PM.
Thank you, Mr. Shad, with regard to your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning and Dr. Caution Parker. We'll pick Mr. Manning.
Not the Caution Parker.
Okay, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded that we, that we approve the draft agenda for July 23, 2019 with a recommended start time of 5 o'clock, was it, was that correct? Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. Perfect. Oh, I'm sorry. Perfect. Sorry about that. If we could cast our votes at this time? Does everyone have a pop-up? She's still on. She is. Yes, we can hear you.
My mic has been off for some time. I've been trying to get everything off.
The mic's, the mic's not off, I just turned it up when I heard you saying hello, but it's not been off, we just turned it up when we heard you saying hello.
Well, I've been saying hello for a while since Dr. Davis reported, so I need to go back to that.
Okay, no problem, we have a motion on the floor right now. If we could cast our votes for the motions on the floor, and I'd be happy to go back. Has everyone cast their votes? By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. What was your question with regard to Dr. Davis's report? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, Dr. Davis, I wanted to say, I really appreciate what you implemented during your time, but I also had two questions, and I also would ask you, my mic's gone off.
It hasn't gone off, it hasn't, it hasn't gone off.
Say one. It's been off.
It hasn't gone off, but you're welcome. It was down, it's not off.
It's been off, but.
It's not been off, but you're welcome to make your comment.
If you will allow me to speak, please.
You're, you have the floor, Dr. Elkins Johnson, you have the floor.
What plans do you have in place to increase the graduation rate based on what you showed us? And then the second question is, what are you doing also to get those students who have dropped out of school to get them back in this current year?
I, I think that, that question is, it can be answered in twofold, I'll try to answer them both simultaneously. One of the first things that we've done when it comes to graduation rates is we put processes in place at each high school to ensure that, one, when a student withdraws from school, that we find out where that student is going before we drop that student from our roles. That will help us with our dropout rates, so having that contact with that student until that student enrolls in another school. Two, each school has a plan in place where they meet with the individual, they meet with their, their school councils and administrations, are meeting with their seniors to determine where they are in their credits and how many credits they need to graduate based on their NGR. One of the things that we've done is implement a, across the system, everyone's using the same spreadsheets to identify students who are being college and career-ready. And so as the students are meeting the mark of college and career-ready based on their NGR, we are documenting whether or not that student has met the criteria to be college and career-ready, which also helps us identify those students who are at risk for not graduating and also identifying those students who are on, in good standings for, in good standing toward their graduation progress. And so those are the measures, those are some of the measures that we are taking to ensure that the graduation numbers continue to, to stay high. We have to also continue with some wraparound services for our students, for those, for those students who may be at risk. And so honestly, Dr. Elkins Johnson, graduation, really, that, that process you probably know begins well before that student gets to high school, to ensure that they are, that they are going to graduate within four years.
Right, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Does that complete your questions, Dr. Elkins Johnson, for Dr. Davis?
It does.
Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, we've arrived at item 15, new business action requested, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is at the time of the new business action requested. 15.1 is the nomination of the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2019, 2020 school year. As is clearly evident today, we have a board member that is participating with us via telephone. Currently, our policy states that our, our process for this, for nominations and for selecting a chair, vice chair, and secretary be conducted by a paper or secret ballot. I am asking that the board suspend that policy for the purpose of voting so that we can conduct the vote electronically, which will give each board member an opportunity to vote, should there be a nomination, should there be multiple nominations from, from the floor. And even allowing us to suspend this policy, which we have a policy that does that, and this is just for, for our public's, for our public's knowledge, we do have a policy, B-E-D-D, Rules of Order, which allows us to suspend a policy. The rules may be suspended at any meeting by a majority voter of board members, the order of the business may be suspended at any meeting by a majority member of the board meeting, board, majority vote of those present. And so we're asking that, asking for a motion to suspend policies B-E-D-F and B-D for the purpose of allowing electronic voting.
Okay. And I'm not in charge right now, this is, Dr. Davis is running the meeting right now, so.
I support your request, Dr. Davis.
So I need a motion.
Mr. Chair. I move that the board suspend the rule regarding paper voting for the nomination and election of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary.
A motion to suspend policies B-E-D-F and B-D for the purpose of allowing electronic voting for the, the position of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. May I get a second? The motion's been properly moved and seconded, I'll call for the question. Any questions, concerns? No questions? At this time, we'll take a vote. Thank you, the motion carries 7-0. Now, the floor is open for nominations for position of Chair for the 2019, 2020 academic school year. Is there a nomination for the position of Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Shad.
I would like to nominate Mr. James Manning for Chairman of the Board of Trustees for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad, we have a nomination for Mr. Manning for Chair for 2019, 2020. Is there another nomination? Being that there are no nomin, no additional nominations, nominations are now closed for the position of Chair for the 2019, 2020 school year, and so now we're called for the vote.
Do we need a second on that?
It's a nomination.
It's a nomination.
It's a nomination. What did you say?
The vote carries 7-0, Mr. Manning will be, has been elected as Chairman for the 2019, 2020 school year, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Thank you very much.
All right, now comes the point of nominations for the position of Vice Chair.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I have a nomination, Dr. Davis. I just did. I was making a nomination.
Nominations are now open for Vice Chair, Dr. Elkins Johnson, you have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Yes, I would like to nominate Dr. Teresa Holmes for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, we have a, we have one nomination for Dr. Teresa Holmes, is there another nomination for Vice Chair?
I was nominated, I was trying to get your attention, Dr. Shad.
Mr. Shad.
Mr. Shad, rather, I promoted him.
We have one nomination for Mr. Jamie Shad for the position of Vice Chair for the 1920, 20 school year. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Being that there are no more nominations for Vice Chair, the nominations are closed, what we will do is take the voting in order of the nominations, and so we will take a vote for Chair, I'm sorry, for Vice Chair for 1920 school year for Dr. Teresa Holmes. And then we'll follow with the vote for Mr. Shad. We have four yeses, one no, one nay, and two abstain.
There is no second on that?
We have three yeses, four nos, and none for a presence. So by motion of, by majority vote, we have Dr. Teresa Holmes will serve as our Vice Chair for the 2019, 2020 school year. Let's give Dr. Holmes a round of applause. Congratulations, Dr. Holmes. And now comes time for the voting for the position of Secretary. Are there any, I'm sorry, nominations for the position of Secretary, are there any?
I nominate Mr. Shad.
Respectfully, I decline, thank you.
Any other nominations from the floor for position of Secretary?
I'll nominate Dr. Caution Parker.
We have a nomination from Dr. Caution Parker, are there any other nominations from the floor? Being that we have heard no additional nominations, the floor is now closed, nominations is closed, and we will move to proceed to voting for the position of Secretary for the 1920 school A 7-0 vote, and Dr. Caution Parker will serve as Secretary for the 1920 school year, congratulations, Dr. Park, Caution Parker.
Congratulations, Mr. Manning, Dr. Holmes, and Dr. Caution Parker. Moving on in our agenda to item 16, this is the second opportunity for public participation, no one has signed up this evening, so we will not be required to participate there. And moving on to item 17, board and superintendent comments, starting on my left, Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you. First of all, it was wonderful to see a student inspire us tonight, I feel they are the true inspiration of our district, so I was glad to have a, a student of Richland Two lead us off. Congratulations to all those who were recognized tonight. Sorry that the weightlifters aren't here, I wanted to disclose to them that I can only bench 60 pounds and my vertical jump is only 12 inches, so I think they would be less than impressed with that. Congratulations to all of our newly-elected officers, a special thank you to Mr. Manning for taking on the challenge of leading this board this upcoming school year. And then finally, I want to ask everyone to please keep 2016 Spring Valley High School graduate London Harrell in your thoughts and prayers. Her father, Mike Harrell, is a PE teacher at Spring Valley High School, and her mother, Paula Cobb, was also, or is an alum of Spring Valley High School, but Sweet London was in a tragic accident the other day, and they are praying for a miracle, so they ask for you all for their thoughts and prayers as they go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini, Mr. Shad.
Y'all have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad, Dr. Caution, oh, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, I would like to say congratulations to the new officers, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Dr. Caution Parker.
Excuse me. Congratulations to all our award honorees this evening. I had the opportunity last week to go to the SCASA Conference in Myrtle Beach, I usually go every year, and heard the phenomenal Colin Powell. He is, I didn't realize he's in his 80s now, but he is such an inspiration and such an outstanding leader. And something he said really resonated with me, and I'm always interested in leadership development opportunities, a sign of leadership, take care of your people. Take care of your people. Take care of followers. Your responsibility to those entrusted to the care, to the care of leaders. Take care of your people. Immediately, I thought about our own superintendent, Dr. Baron Davis, who I think does an extremely outstanding job of taking care of his people here in Richland School District, too. And I just want to say thank you again to you, Dr. Davis. I really appreciate everything that you do. And your team, you've got a great team. And it was a great end of the year report, very outstanding, very successful year. We always have things that happen that we have very little control over, but things that we do have control over, we do well. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Mr. Manning.
I want to thank our current slate of officers, Ms. Mackey and Dr. Elkins Johnson and Mr. Shad for their service, serving in the officer roles. It's not as easy as it looks, I can promise you, in any of the roles, so thank you for all that you've done for us in those positions. I appreciate the support of the board and the community. Looking forward to the next year as Chair, serving alongside this board and, of course, Dr. Davis and the great work that you and your team do. Otherwise, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Holmes.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to our former officers. I appreciate you all. And I promise as newly-elected officer that I will, as Dr. Parker Caution said, take care of our people. I make a promise that I will serve in the office to take care of our people. That's inclusive of our students, our teachers, our parents, and our community. I'm also looking forward to working with my seat buddy over here, James Manning. We've had a good time all year long, and I just want to say, I promise, I make this promise, and I'm sincere, I'm so pleased to be on this board, to help everybody, and I want to make sure that we do the kind of job that is premier, and I promise to do so. Good night.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, a heartfelt thank you to all of our officers, outgoing officers, for a job well done for the 2018, 2018-2019 academic year. As we have an opportunity to reflect back on this year, I think we've learned so many things as a board. I think it has given us an opportunity as a board and as a school district to remain, to continue to strive to be premier, but also to remind us that it's important for us to stay focused and keep our eyes on the ball and on the prize at all times. And that prize and our eyes is ensuring that the students in our district are receiving a premier educational experience in Richland School District, too. I also want to take an opportunity to recognize, as many of you probably had an opportunity to see the Killian Elementary Drum Line while attendees this weekend at the South Carolina Democratic Convention, the drum line is led by Mr. Larry Thorne, and they delivered a, just a tremendous performance of beats to the crowds on Saturday morning. For those of I in our community that are not aware, students age 18 and under are receiving free nutritious meals this summer. Our food service department, which is operated by Sedexo, is serving meals on a first-come, first-served basis in several schools and for nine district locations. We ask that you please check the district's website for the information regarding where food, where we're serving the free nutritious meals. We are, of course, still in the hiring season, and so from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, July, the ninth, the Human Resource Department staff will be here at R2I2 taking applications and conducting interviews at their all positions career fair. Again, that's all positions career fair, that's classified, certified. So come on out, spread the word, let people know that we are hiring here in Richland 2. Job seekers should register online and complete their applications as soon as possible. And Mrs. Williams may be upset with me, but I'm going to say this, even if you don't complete the registration, just come on and show up anyway. Tell a Dr. Davis sent you. So encourage people to show up. Many schools will be closed the first week of July for the Fourth of July holiday, so just as a PSA and FYI to our community. So district office will be opened to the public Monday through Wednesday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Both offices will be closed. That's the office here and the office on Brookfield on July 4th and July 5th. And I ask that you all have a very safe and productive remainder of your week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I just want to say thank you as I complete my tenure as board chair. I just want to thank our superintendent. I know that when I was sitting in chairs out there and I was SIC Chair at my children's school and the state board, one of the things that was paramount to me was equity and parity. And we've seen, we've seen so much come to fruition, so much that our bond does, so much that our superintendent has, is that your job is to operate the district. And to see the vision that you have for our students and equity and parity in all areas of our district, I just appreciate that. It's something that I don't have to focus as much on because our superintendent is. I appreciate that. But to be on this side and to see some of the accomplishments, you know, that our community has made, the bond, you know, the largest single-question bond, you know, in our state to have passed resoundingly, and that was for safe schools. It wasn't for political reasons. It wasn't for, you know, personal agendas. It was for safe schools. And so that every last one of our schools will feel the impact of what that bond means. I think, I'm thankful to our community, thankful for the people who are executing the district, who is executing that, our executive staff, bar none, our principals, our teachers, the people that have to be here, those that don't, who are supporting. Jamie Volmer, who spoke at a parent partnership summit probably seven or so years ago, wrote a book called Schools Cannot Do It Alone. This is not my job, your job, it's our community. Our community works together in partnerships, and I just appreciate how that comes to fruition more and more each day, each month. You're constantly surprising us with something else, some of the partnership that you've aligned with. I remember Dr. Cornish, when she was on SIC at Ridgeview, talking about this, you know, Ricky on the Block type thing, and, you know, just the partnership that, I remember when certain things were dreams, and they've come to fruition, so I just want to say thank you. My message tonight is to thank you, bless our community, bless the support staff, bless our superintendent. And for the family of Brian Kenny Walker, who was a parent, there was, there was a car accident on the I-20 about a week or so ago. One of the persons killed, and, you know, God bless both of the families, but one of the persons killed was a parent of a Ridgeview student. So to have gone to that funeral last weekend, just see people's heartbreak at the loss of a loved one, a community member, so many community members came back who had been here years ago. Every day is not promised, y'all. We are blessed to be here with our families and just want us to appreciate the positive and just be thankful for every day that we have. And as, as we go forward, I won't be board chair because I'm done, but I promise to continue to be. I know one of the things on this board that I wanted to do when I got on the board was to support, to be an advocate for children, teachers, our community, but to be supportive of what we're doing so we can do things. So when I'm not in this seat, I promise to still be respectful and courteous to my colleagues and to our staff members and not a hindrance, and not ugly, but to be polite, to be cordial, to be professional, and to keep our eyes on the prize because that's what we've been sitting here to do. So bless everyone who is here tonight. Next on our agenda is item 19.1, the second executive session for which there is no need. So we scroll on down to item 20.1, adjournment, and we can consider ourselves adjourned at 8:47 p.m. Have a good evening.